Well, we'll call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Monday, June 19. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Schottke, will you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Dr. Flores.
Here.
Ms. Grant.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Reverend Mathias.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Schottke here.
Here.
Dr. Baker is excused. President Vob.
Present.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Support for that?
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next on our agenda are the celebrations.
Thank you, Dr. Vob and members of the board. I'd like to ask Mr. Kirk Johnson to come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam President, Dr. Vob, Superintendent Weather O'Neill, and other distinguished board members. It gives me a great honor and pleases me to be with you on this evening as we are thinking about back to school already. This year will be a little different that we will be starting before Labor Day and we have been accustomed to starting after Labor Day. And so, how do we get that on the minds of our parents and students and community? So as a part of the comprehensive communications plan to raise awareness about the start of school, the Communications Office decided to have a jingle contest. A jingle contest. And you know, jingles can kind of get your attention, kind of grab your emotions, and stick in your mind forever. This contest was open to all GRPS students. The students were invited to submit an original 32nd song that had to feature the line, "Don't Be Late for August 28th."
Ah, that's good.
Our very own district finance department judged the entries, and there were top six that moved on to the public vote, which took place on Facebook and YouTube. And so, without any further ado, I want to go through the winners. And the winner actually won by a very close vote of only 44 votes, so it was a really tough competition there. But in third place, we had Alicia Pittman from Innovation Central. In second place, there was Sierra Barrera from Innovation Central. And our first place finisher and winner were from CA Frost, and they were Emily Jespersen and Nora Milonowski, who we have with us tonight. And I would like them to come up and grab a cheer. Nora's here. As we give you a chance to hear the creativity and the work that these two students did, and allow you to hear what you're going to be hearing all summer. And one of those jingles that you will never forget. And I think you will be able to appreciate the purity and the innocent in this particular winning entry. So if we can get technology to work for us on cue, which it rarely does, there won't be a visual, it'll just be an audio.
Okay.
So we have Nora here, she's going to smile to y'all. I was sharing with Nora that she's going to be hearing her winning entry quite a bit July and August, everywhere.
And what grade?
Second grade.
Second grade.
Very good.
Not next year.
School, don't be late, first day of school, come back to school. First day of school, come back to school. Don't be late on August 28th. Don't be absent, come to school. Don't be late on August 28th. I can't wait to see who my new teacher is, ooh. See who my new teacher is, yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't be late, ooh, on August 28th, yeah.
Foundation for a Grammy. Have started very similar. So we would like to congratulate Nora, and Emily's not here tonight, on their award-winning performance there, and give you a chance to meet her up close and personal.
Yeah. Nice.
Her parents are here tonight as well. Mr. Milonowski. Take care.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was just really awesome.
Thank you so much.
You guys. You can almost hear the freckles in her voice.
Yeah, I love it.
We'll all be singing that, "Don't Be Late."
It's in my head all day.
I need to see my teacher.
Thank you, Dr. Vob. I'd like to ask Dr. Christopher Hanks to come forward, please.
I have three sources of information to draw on here, so. Dr. Vob, Superintendent Neal, and members of the board, thank you. I'm honored to be here this evening to tell you a little bit about the Dyer-Ives Poetry Competition, which, excuse me, occurred this winter and spring, and it has been happening for many years. A competition sponsored by the Dyer-Ives Foundation. You may know that a couple of years ago, Dyer-Ives closed out its endowment by awarding all its grant money to various organizations in the community. One of those grants was given to the Grand Rapids Public Library to continue the poetry competition, which supports poets and artists and the community. Each year, there are three categories, and in this particular year, one of my students, Marie Milsarski, was the proud winner of the elementary category in the poetry competition. I'm hoping Marie comes through, but it doesn't look like she was able to make it tonight. But I do have.
There she is.
That's.
That's Marie.
Entrance of an artist.
That's right.
While Marie's taking a seat next to me, I will just mention that this year in the elementary category, the competition received over 400 entries. It was apparently a very difficult judgment to make. The judge of the elementary division, Oliver De La Paz, had this to say about the poem. "I truly admire the imagination and the sonic play in lines like, ornamented with the diamonds of the stars and blown by a blackberry kissed breeze. There's such pleasure in the language, but also in the miraculous transformation of the night sky into a being as magnificent and mythical as a sky full of constellations." Wonderful poem. And I'm glad Marie could join us. Are you ready to share your poem with the board? Oh, Marie had her tonsils out on Friday.
Aye.
So we weren't sure if she was going to be able to read. Luckily, I brought.
Can you read it?
I have the poem. I will gladly read it.
Oh, you would prefer to read it?
Or Mr. Milsarski?
If it pleases the board and yourself, like, Marie, is my reading it?
Absolutely.
Please do. Her voice is rather chum.
All right.
Yep. Night is a silken robe worn by Eve, spun with threads of darkness, ornamented with the diamonds of the stars and the crest of the moon. The robe of night flows with velvet waves blown by a blackberry kissed breeze, the waves of which are as soft as a nightmare's mane, strewn with twinkling stars. As you touch, you sink in further into the soft embrace of Eve until you reach the land of dreams. Suddenly, with the twirl of her cape, Eve makes way for her sister, Dawn."
How beautiful.
Nice. Wow.
The poems in the competition are collected in a small book, and I believe that there are extra copies available at the Grand Rapids Public Library.
Nice. Nice job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. I have my doctorate in poetry, studied a lot of poetry, and it really is. I was bracing myself for something nice. That was really substantial, beautiful. Really, really nice conceit. Well done. Keep writing.
Dr. Hanks. We'll congratulate you. Shake our hands.
Nice job. And then finally, Dr. Vob and members of the board, I would like to ask Mickey Sadez to come forward, please.
President Vob, Superintendent Weather O'Neill, board members, I'm happy to be here with you this evening so we can present this year's Summer of 2017 LAH Stevens Travel Award. To be eligible for consideration of this reward, award, you need to be a GREA teacher, GRPS teacher. You have to have five years, a minimum of five years, of experience teaching with us, and submit a proposal to the district. We had eight candidates this year. We had a panel of assistant superintendents and executive, excuse me, directors for instruction that reviewed all of those and selected a winner. And this year, I'm proud to present Cheryl Depker from Southwest Community Campus as our winner. Cheryl has won a $1,500 Travel Award so that she can travel this year, and she's joined us this evening to tell us just briefly about her travels and how her travels are going to enhance the learning in her classroom. Cheryl.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Vob, Superintendent Neal, and fellow board members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight in front of you to accept this award. I am leaving July 4th for Bilbao, Spain, for a three-week course at a university there. There are four classes that I'll be taking each day. One is on conversational Spanish, another's on grammar, another on culture, and another on technology and instructional methods in the classroom. So I'm excited to be immersed in Spanish. I learned Spanish in the Dominican Republic by living there and being immersed in it there, so I really, I learn best in that environment, so I'm really looking forward to that. I do teach math at Southwest Community Campus in Spanish, so this class, well, these courses will help in my teaching. They'll also help me in communicating with my parents of my students as well, because many of them speak only Spanish. So I'm looking forward to just strengthening my communication skills in my second language, but also, I'm excited to show my students that travel is always an option for them. A lot of them are very excited for me. I told them all about it. I'm just going to send postcards to the kids who put their address down for me. And I'm just, I'm looking forward to going back and sharing the experiences, photos, any artifacts that I bring back, just so that they understand that it's a big world, but it's a big world, and you can go see all of it. So, and for a lot of our kids, they think that, you know, Hispanic culture is centered over here in the Western Hemisphere, and it's a nice tie-in for them to see how much they also have in common with Spain and the culture over there. They all know soccer, so I want them to see some of the architecture and the food and other aspects of the culture. So I'm looking forward to that, and receiving this award definitely helps cover the cost of that course. So I thank you very much for your time this evening, and thank you very much for this award, so.
Nice. $1,500. Good job.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Next, we have public comment for board agenda items.
I have done.
Okay. Report, secretary's report.
All right, just three quick items this evening. Board members, there are two committee meetings coming up you should be aware of. The Academic Achievement Committee is scheduled to meet tomorrow, June 20th, at 9:00 a.m. right here in the auditorium. And the next Ad Hoc Policy Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 11 at 1:00 p.m. in Room 101. And lastly, the Grand Rapids Urban League is holding its Second Annual Park Party on June 24th and July 22nd at Martin Luther King Park located at 900 Fuller Avenue Southeast. This will be held from noon to 4:00 each day. There will be music, food, games, resources, and of course, fun. The event is sponsored by the Grand Rapids Housing Commission and the Campaw Connection. That's my report.
Questions for Ms. Schottke on that? Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Dr. Vob, I would like to ask Philip Green, Phil Green, to come forward, please.
I'm here today very excited about our participation again in the Summer Foods Meal Program, also known as, this one of our promotions, "Meet Up to Eat Up." One of the reasons this was worded like that was to eliminate the stigma of receiving a free meal. This is a federally funded program. We are reimbursed the same way we would be for any school lunch or breakfast that we serve on a daily basis to our students. So for every meal that is, again, that is served, not that we prepare, the meals have to be served before we can count them for federal funding reimbursement. We currently service about 19,000 lunches a day during the school year. That drops down to approximately 3,000 during the summer months. So we're trying to bridge that gap between, for some students who may not have the opportunity to have the nutritious meals that we provide every day at schools during that gap during the summertime. As you can see, there's a big drop-off between that 19 and that 3,000. But it is set up, right now, we have 27 sponsors, we'll call them, for this program. We are the ninth largest in Michigan at this time. If anyone is interested, I do have the actual summer sites that we have here. We have also, of course, we have our schools, MLK, Burton, so forth and so on, but we've also partnered with some other organizations such as United Methodist House, Baxter Community Center, so all of them will be offering the meals during the summer also. It is running from June 19th. We actually do not start Grand Rapids Public School areas or schools until the 26th, so next Monday, but it runs through August the 18th. What this sheet will show also is, most of the Grand Rapids Public School sites run Monday through Thursday. Some of our other sponsors run Monday through Friday. Some of the sites will have lunches and breakfasts. Most of the, or all of the Grand Rapids Public Sites will have a cold breakfast, sometimes a hot breakfast, but always a hot lunch. So we're varied by location. And the times are all outlined on the forms here. There are a number of ways that individuals can find out about the locations. One is to go to the Nutrition Center or Services website. That'll give the schools the locations, the times, and also, they can pull up a menu also to see what's served during those days. Any questions for me?
Mr. Green, just a small clarification. You said roughly 19,000 lunches. Obviously, that's a little more than enrollment, and I'm assuming that's because these lunches are not restricted simply to GRPS students.
That's correct. That includes some of the non-GRPS sites also. That's correct. And we are the school food authority for it.
Do you have that website? Or is it on the sheet?
It's on the sheet, but you can go to www.grps.org/nutrition. That'll pull up everything. There is also.
Can the sheet be sent to us digitally?
What's that?
The sheets that has the sites, could that be sent to us digitally? Could that be great?
Absolutely, absolutely. Also, one of our promotional sheets, you can see on this, they can text 877-877, and it will give them the closest location to their area. So if you're close to GR4, it'll give you that information, so you won't have to travel far.
Bill, will you say that again for the record, for the TV?
Yeah.
Say that again.
Text the number 877-877.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our action items. We have the 2017-2018 budget.
Good evening again, board. Superintendent Neal, we're at the point now where much discussion's taken place the last couple of weeks, the 2017-18 budget. Now it's a time that we need the board to formally approve those budgets as presented to you. Again, there are three resolutions. They all need to be approved separately, one for the general fund, one for the special revenue, one for the debt service fund. So anybody have any questions on any of these budgets before action's taken?
We had a presentation, a detailed presentation in a work session in the beginning of this month. The board had an opportunity for follow-up questions, and we also had a formal presentation of it at the public hearing prior to this board meeting, so. Any further questions for Mr. Oberst? Do I have a motion to accept or to approve, accept the General Operating Fund Resolution?
So moved. Support.
Please take the vote on that.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Vob?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion to approve the Debt Revenue Fund Resolution?
So moved. Support.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Vob?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And do I have a motion for the Special Revenue Fund Resolution?
Support. Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
And President Vob?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oberst, and your team for all the work on this. Can someone give us a little context on this next action item?
Jane DeGroot. I expect Jane to come forward. What this is, is the ISD, Early, Middle, College Resolution, and the board will have to vote for the ISD. We have our own early, middle college, but we need the board to support the Kent Hitter Media School District in order for them to offer a program for kids throughout the county. So that's what the resolution is for. And so, just in case you have questions about our middle college, Jane.
How does it relate to ours?
So ours is totally separate, right, for however, we will accept any other students that would like to come from throughout the county as long as they apply for the waiver to come to the district. But for the Kent Hitter Media School District, they're just totally separate for.
So it's required of all the districts in the county to accept, to agree that the ISD should offer it?
Can offer it.
Not that. Any questions for Superintendent Mr. DeGroot before we entertain a motion?
Is this a separate program than the ones that we would be running? Is there any reason why there should be that program?
The reason that the ISD should have a program? Theirs is really because some of the smaller districts can't afford to offer, and they don't have enough students to offer it, and so the ISD will step in and offer programs in order to give all of the children experience.
That makes sense, yeah. Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming up. Do I have a motion for approval of the KISD Early, Middle College Year's Resolution?
So moved. Support.
Any concerns, deliberations? Zina, take the vote.
All right, Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
And President Vob?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda Grouping.
I'd like to move approval of this item, absent the student reinstatement, which I propose we vote on separately.
Do I have a support for that motion?
Support.
Take the vote.
All right, Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
And President Vob?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion for approval of the student reinstatement?
So moved.
Support.
Some deliberations, concerns?
I am planning to vote no on this in light of the fact that we continue to send students back to their neighborhood schools after very high-level infractions such as carrying dangerous or bringing dangerous weapons to school. I think in light of the number of incidents in our community where young people are being shot in the streets, the rise in shootings and crime sends the wrong message, and therefore I'll register a negative vote on this.
Just for the record, the student is not returning to his original school, is returning to a different school. I just want that noted.
This particular student?
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about. But.
That's not the policy. The policy is to return them, to put them in a different school.
Okay, okay, so that's generally what we do, is put them in another school. Okay.
There's no other comment? Take the vote.
All right, Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker excused. Dr. Flores?
No.
And President Vob?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Discussion items. We have, just to go over our schedule, we traditionally take the first board meeting in July off, and as it falls right before the holiday, it's especially welcome this year, I think, for everybody. So we will not be meeting on July 3rd, but we will be meeting for the work session in July. You have the book in front of you, "You Can't Teach What You Don't Know," and we will be discussing that book at that July work session. It's a very, it's not a long read, so hopefully that's enough time. This is a book that the cabinet and other members have read, so I think it would be worthwhile for us to be on the same page. And we will also have our regular scheduled board meeting in July. Any questions regarding that schedule or agenda? Great. We have settled on a retreat date as well, so we've gotten that information. Sure you have that scheduled. Public comment for non-agenda items.
Very good. We just have one this evening, Mr. Michael Bukala. Will you come forward, please?
Hey, if you could state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak, and we'll give you a one-minute warning.
Okay, my name is Michael Bukala, and I worked for the district for 28 years, and I retired last week. And I wanted to share that I sent out a public email to all my colleagues, and the district eliminated it, erased it. And I just thought that was a violation of my civil rights. And what I wanted to say, what I put on my retirement form, is I did not appreciate that one-third of my career, teaching career, was being harassed, retaliated by the administration. I did not appreciate being coerced into signing a confidentiality agreement and being forced to keep silent about all the inappropriate activities going on within the district. And I said I was going to come to the public meeting, which I'm doing. And I said I was going to come to the public meeting, which I'm doing now. And I said I was also planning on running for a school board in 2018 because of what has happened to me and to other teachers being retaliated against, and children used in my classroom to, their education being exploited to settle personal vendettas. In 2009, 2010, the year I had to sign the agreement, I was placed in a classroom that was cut in half, and it was wall-to-wall children. And then I had emotionally impaired children in there, an odd number compared to the other four classrooms that were there in the school. I did, and then in 2011, when I spoke out at the meeting, I was retaliated against, my assignment was changed, and then I was not given teaching manuals. And then when I spoke out again the second time, the children were removed, the higher functioning children were removed, and I put, they were replaced with more EI children. And then my principal retaliated against me, yet she was recorded as being highly effective by Marigano. A year later, she was fired by Brian Gam for being ineffective. So, my major problem with my agreement is that I befriended a person that was trying to blackmail and extort the former superintendent, but they all has connection to the current superintendent and certain board members, and they were complicit in covering up the scandal that could have arisen. And I'm just very angry at what, how I was treated. And then, I was just so frustrated that I confronted Teresa, and she was ignoring my emails, and finally, I confronted her in one of her learning walks, or whatever it was, listening to her. And I confronted her, and I presented her with various emails, and she started being untruthful towards me, and we exchanged a few negative comments. And then suddenly, I was retaliated against because I was being trained in Montessori method, and I was not allowed to finish. So I wasted 330 hours of instructional time, $10,000 of taxpayers' money, and then I was told I was not going to have a job to get my credential. So when the following fall, my job, which was eliminated, was replaced by two teachers. So I just want to tell people that I love my job, but I hated who I worked for, because I was tired working for incompetent and vindictive people who would use children as a pawn and exploit their education to get back at a teacher, and this practice has to stop.
Mr. Bukala, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do have copies of the email that was, that you would like.
Do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Austin, you need to take those papers.
Go ahead and pass them out, and we'll get them back to you. We'll let him pass them out, we'll get them back. You know, since in the argument, go ahead and pass them out, we'll just get them back to you.
Why are you afraid?
Thank you, sir.
I don't want to be anything as a kid, because I'm changed.
Next on our agenda, our superintendent's comments, any comments? No comment. Dr. Faub? All right. Ms. Grant? Any comment tonight?
No comment.
Ms. Schackey?
No comment.
Mr. Ross?
Happy summer.
Dr. Flores?
Yeah, just a note of clarification. On the, on the communication we have on reinstatement of, of the student that I voted no on, it says that it is therefore recommended of the committee that the student be reinstated to his neighborhood school with the following conditions, so...
Yeah.
I mean, you said, you said he was not going back to neighborhood school.
No, she didn't say that. She said he wasn't going to.
He didn't go back to his original school.
Okay. Well, it states otherwise.
Yeah, I understand the miscommunication. Sorry about that.
I have lots of things to say. What a surprise. I just wanted to comment about the graduations that I attended, that I figure if I'm on this board long enough, I can catch up going to Grand Rapids Public School graduations with all the graduations I went to at Kendall Hills. But I thought that Dr. Gorman and his assistant, Sandy, made these graduations, and I've been to a lot of graduations, and they were so well organized, everything was on time, you know, the people were enthusiastic, the kids cheered for one another, I, I just, I had a wonderful time, one of the long evenings, but I had a wonderful time. And then, what I should have said at the last meeting, and I didn't say, was that in May, I had attended the English Language Learners Awards at Central, and I was so pleased to be there, because I really, being new on the board, I just really did not have any idea how many kids that we have coming to us who really do not know the language. And here these kids are with their moms and dads, they're from all over the world, and I mean, I just got chills thinking of these kids, and it was a beautiful evening. I know that Dr. Gunnell, is Gunnell? Gunnell? She, she does a wonderful job, the people that work there. I was just so pleased to be there and share that with them.
Ms. Slade?
Yeah, I also went to the Newcomers graduation, and it was exciting to see the diversity I sat among the parents and just how proud they were of their, of their kids. And having gone through about five of the graduations this year, again, it was just to see the increase in the number of graduates, and just the excitement of, of our kids and their families reaching their dream and then the possibilities. So it was really quite a, quite a pleasure.
I had that same experience, especially at the Union High School graduation, with all of the young people walking across the stage, and just the richness of their backgrounds and perspectives that is our asset at Grand Rapids Public Schools. I also wanted to just note, we, the board was, we had high-level MAPS score shared with the board over the last few years, and I just wanted to express my appreciation to all of the educators and the incredibly hard lifts they have done to continue to increase the level of growth that these children are experiencing. When you see growth measurements, that's where good education is happening, and good education is happening in GRPS. So thank you to everybody, and welcome summer.
One more thing, I'm wondering, we should take the speech that the young woman, and I went to so many of the graduations, I've forgotten which one it was, but a young woman who was homeless when she was in the fourth grade.
Yeah.
And here she was graduating.
It was a Delta, yeah.
And a Delta, we, we should put that out so people can see what this school means to so many people, because, I mean, it was just so touching, but we have to somehow do a better job to let people know. They just don't know what goes on here, and she was just a perfect example of, of the success that I guess we can claim in a little bit of a way, but I was so proud of her and the whole school district.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. All right, meeting adjourned.